Good evening, everyone. It is December 16th, 2024. This is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a quorum of our full council here with us tonight and a lot of good friends and family members in the crowd here with us tonight for a real special occasion. We have two pinings in our police department and two oaths of office for firefighter EMT positions in our fire department. So we're going to start with that tonight. And Chief, I'll invite you to kick us off. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a council, appreciate the taking, giving us the time and the opportunity to introduce our community newest public servants, police department to our community. So our first officer is Riley DeBoer. Riley, can you come up, please? Riley came from us, from our area, from Jackson, went to Kelmorean Lutheran High School, then went to Waukesha Tech for her associate's degree, where no one will be surprised to learn that she was extremely active, worked through, and so active and so well-liked by our instructors, it's going to be okay. She became a marketing, a piece in their marketing through the show what great young men and women are joining the public service, we for inspired partners to protect and serve their communities. I'm very proud of that. Riley joined our department in May of 2022 as a community service officer. She's been very highly recommended by Detective McCarthy, retired detective McCarthy, joined our team and since has proven herself as truly a public.
Well, we're going to start all over. The only thing worse than giving me a microphone is giving me a live microphone. So, did you all hear what I said?
Yes.
That's great. I'm going to repeat it anyway because our folks at home might need to know. So Riley comes to us from Kelmorean Lutheran High School. She went, attended Waukesha Tech School, where she was top of her, not top of the class totally, but pretty darned close and so well-liked by our instructors. When we did our background investigation, all they did was gush about how great she were. We were trying to get, give us something that where she areas of improvement. And old crusty salt, Mark Steigler, said, "I have nothing bad to say about her. She has no areas of growth." That's pretty great words. She joined our department as a community service officer in May of 2022 and has since really proven herself to be a great fit for our department and our model of policing, of protect and serve, of community servants. She was officially sworn in already on July 29th of this past year because we, identifying her attributes of becoming a great police officer, invested in her and sent her to recruit school as a West Bend police officer at Waukesha Tech. Not to any of our surprises, her class nominated her to be the class president of her recruit school. And just last week, on the 12th, rather, myself and Captain Grinwald were very honored to watch both her and Brady, who we're going to meet in a second, graduate from Waukesha Tech and heard a great speech from Riley that made a big brother awful proud of you. So, well, we'll see you all. We'll take notes for you.
What a nightmare.
Thanks for taking care of our community. Riley is going to have her father pin her badge on as we, yep, father. Come on, buddy. So, as is our tradition, it doesn't really pay for me to pin on a badge. It's more important that we understand from a family's point of view. We've already brought Riley on board. Now it's a time for us to charge you as her family. And Dad's here to represent that family and friends to make sure that Riley maintains her life as a human being. Police work can be very narrowing, can be very all-consuming, but we need her to be a solid, whole person. And that's where you and the family come in to make sure she still goes on those vacations, she still lives a wider life. It's never over, Pop. Yep, it's never over. So I'll go ahead and have you pin on the badge. Officer that we're recognizing tonight also joined our department in July of this past year where we, come on over here, buddy. Don't bite. Yeah, that's all right. Brady also joined our department on the 22nd of July, was sworn in on the 29th and attended recruit school in the same class as Riley, which is kind of neat to have partners all the way through your, your learning process, your recruit school, and that'll continue on as they go through field training together. Brady attended Cedarburg High School, obtained his associate's degree at Milwaukee Area Technical College, and then, as I said, attended recruit school at Waukesha Tech. The thing that we heard about Brady over and over as we were trying to determine if he'd be a good fit for our department and if we were going to be a fit for him was that he's a people person. He loves to be around people, he loves to talk with people, and that is the number one most important trait of a police officer is the ability to talk to people. So we recognize that attribute. We invested in you sent your recruit school and we're glad to have you on our team.
Thank you.
Very good. Brady, oh, yeah, very good. Brady very smartly, as all good young men should do, selected his mother to pin on his badge. And again, I'll charge you with the same thing, Mom. It's your job to help us to make sure that Brady stays a whole person. It's not a small thing either in the badge presentation that we recognize that we are going to start their training and we're going to take care of them, but Mom and Dad and their families have been training them since birth to be servants, and that's why they're joining our team.
Allergy. Austin Stelter, he started on December 9th, originally from Sheboygan, graduating from Sheboygan. He currently lives in Cleveland, Wisconsin. He's completing his paramedic school at Lake Shore Tech. He's been around West Bend Fire Department though, doing his ride-alongs and things like that, doing a great job. The shifts that he's working with, they're just kind of like, you got to talk to this guy, you got to get him to apply. We got him to apply and everything worked out, so welcome, Austin.
State your name.
I, Austin Stelter.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter EMT.
As firefighter EMT.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
But have not yet.
But have not yet.
Entered upon the duties thereof.
Entered the duty thereof.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
Upgrading private water laterals, upgrading storm sewer facilities, and we're moving and replacing curb and gutter sidewalk, et cetera. The current preliminary estimates that are in your memo are based on forty percent design. We're in the middle of the design, so those estimates may fluctuate as we go. We'll give you another estimate later before we go to bid. And we would use budgeted funds in water utility, sewer utility, engineering department, and ALPA fund to cover the cost of this project. Also to note, the private water lateral replacement will be funded by Washington County in accordance with the agreement that was finalized earlier this year between the city and the county to address lead laterals throughout the city. Also note that a portion of Kilborn Avenue construction will be funded by the State of Wisconsin Local Road Improvement Program. Next, we have our annual sidewalk replacement program. So this is a contract that we have annually. As usual, we have funds in the 2025 budget to address as many sidewalk replacement as we can, and we continue this program with the database of defective sidewalk that we find throughout the city. Next is a crack and joint sealing of pavement. This is a pavement maintenance operation to prolong the life of existing pavement, where we seal the cracks and joints in the pavement in order to prevent water infiltration, which would lead to faster degradation of the pavement. And finally, the last contract is the water utility pavement repairs at various locations. This is also an annual contract that we use to have water utility be able to repair pavement, concrete curb and gutter sidewalks sometimes, in areas where they had to respond to water main breaks or lateral leaks in the winter, in the time where they could not do pavement. So they temporarily patch those areas, and we come back in the spring and summer and fix those under this contract. So for this contract, we would use funds budgeted in the water utility.
Okay, you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen and Alderman Sparts. Are there any questions for Max? Alderman Schmidt?
So the crack and joint sealing of the pavement, is there certain areas that you have already targeted, or is there a document of some sort that you could take a look at?
So for this, we target certain streets. All the streets are rated through the Pazer method, and those crack and joint sealing usually go towards streets that are higher in those ratings, seven, eight, nine. And we usually perform an inspection of those streets, and we develop a map, which we will provide to you of these areas that are going to be addressed for the 2025 contract. So we're in the process of gathering this data, and then we'll provide it at the time we bid the project.
And when does the project take place, when you do this?
So for all these contracts, we anticipate bidding early in the year. Some of them will be February, March, maybe April. And then the construction will be probably starting in May. So some contracts may start in May, some contracts may start in June, and go through the summer. We typically like to have an end of construction, end of September, to stay away from the colder weather for the pavement.
Sure.
So that's the timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? There are none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, W-22-03, Shepherd of the Hills. Max?
Thank you. So this is a typical stormwater maintenance agreement that we come and present to you every time that we issue a stormwater management permit for a development. We enter into an agreement with the developer in order to ensure that they will actually build the stormwater management facilities as intended and maintain them over the years so they continue to function properly. So this one is for a project that is a subdivision of land located along the west side of Wildwood Road, just north of Shuster Drive. The land is owned by the Shepherd of the Hills Church, and the church also owns a parcel adjacent to this land subdivision, and that additional parcel is where the stormwater management facility will be built and maintained by the church. This agreement that we enter with the property owner typically specifies the responsibilities for maintenance and corrective actions that the city can take if the owner fails to properly maintain the facilities. We would recommend that the board and council approve the agreement.
Okay, we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Sternig, any questions from Max? There are none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Max. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as Chair.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have eleven agenda items this evening. The first one is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on December 2nd. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Buchlich. Any additions, deletions, corrections? There being none on favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second item is award Q-24-04 Architectural and Engineering Design Contract for Fire Station One. Welcome back, Max.
Thank you so much. This item is for award a quote that we published, looking for proposal for architectural and engineering design for the new fire station one. The current fire station is located at the southwest corner of Washington Street and Seventh Avenue, and the city is proposing to relocate the station and build the new fire station to respond to the needs of expansion of services in the city. The new location is at the southeast corner of Washington Street and Highway 45. We followed the purchasing policy procedures as required to post this RFP, this Request for Proposal. We use a quality-based selection to, as authorized by the policy, and we had a selection committee composed of ten members listed in your memo. We received seven proposals, also from firms listed in your memo, and after review of all the proposals, the selection committee is recommending that council award the contract to SEH. I can feel they're standing behind me, so if you have any questions about the project, about the design contract, I'm going to pass the mic to them. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Trevor Frank. I'm a senior architect with Short Elliott Hendrickson, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. If you'd like a little bit of a background on myself, our firm, and why we were selected, I don't know all the details. Max could maybe answer that. We weren't part of that process, but... So I am an architect with Short Elliott Hendrickson, been practicing architecture a little over thirty years, twenty of those at SEH, and the last fifteen years of my career has been laser-focused on emergency services buildings. Our team, who we brought with us to the interview, consisted of six professionals, all with a really deep pedigree in fire station and emergency services projects. Our firm has done over one hundred and twenty-five of them in the last fifteen years, all over the United States. I'm currently working in four other states doing fire station work. It's basically all that I do, all that our team that's been assigned to this project does. Our team that was assigned to this project is the team that Chief Noran and his staff and you all will see from day one through the end of the project. We don't have marketers that come and sell our work and then turn it over to architects. The architects and engineers sell our work and will be involved in the project. We understand you've got a pretty aggressive schedule. You're giving your consultants roughly five months to design this building. We were asked in our interview if we thought that there was any reservation on our behalf to do that, and our response was we wouldn't have probably submitted a proposal had we not been able to accomplish the schedule. So it's aggressive, but we've already had conversations with fire staff about what they're doing between Christmas and New Year's, because we feel it's really important to get this thing kicked off as soon as possible. And we will do that as soon as we are under contract with the city. We, as part of our submittal, submitted an American Institute of Architects contract for the city to understand what contracting vehicle would be our preference. We're going to start with that document. Obviously, they can become amended, but that is the contracting vehicle that we would prefer to use with the city. It seems like that is an acceptable type of contract. So once we get that contract signed, we are going to be getting started on the project. One of the other things that I discussed with the fire department is even before we're under contract, we won't be providing any professional services yet at that point, but getting a kickoff meeting to understand where we need to pick up, where we need to start once we are under contract. Seeing the operations at the fire department, getting a chance to meet some of the staff members that we'll start to be engaged with as we're under contract, those are all things that we feel we can do ahead of time to keep the ball rolling, because this is, as I mentioned, a fairly aggressive design schedule. This fire station that you're looking at constructing is roughly forty thousand square feet. We're currently working on one very similar in size in Watertown, Wisconsin. We've completed other ones of that size, but I can tell you that it's a bit of an anomaly. Typically, a standard fire station in a community is about twenty-five thousand square feet, but because of the types of services you provide your residents, you need additional equipment, and that's what usually takes up most of the space. So that's why we're bumping up against that forty thousand square foot size for the facility. Dan, I don't know from an engineer's standpoint if there's anything. You've got a lot of, your pre-work is done, you've done your homework, right? You've got environmental assessments done out there, you've got geotechnical exploration, all the stuff we would have asked you for or helped you provide had we not done it ahead of time. We're fully available and willing to engage in the construction manager search should you move in that direction. We can certainly provide some insight and input into those professionals as the city RFPs and contracts with those services as well.
Trevor's given a lot of detail. I'll just briefly introduce myself. Several of you have seen me stand at this podium in my capacity as a wastewater engineer, helping wastewater utility through a number of projects, actively working on two right now. I was the one that brought Trevor to the city when talking with Jay about the potential for a new station. We asked that Trevor come down and bring his team, and really, he's the guy that's the key cog in making a successful project. Happy to be part of the team, and certainly I'll still be around to help make sure that we're staying on task throughout the process.
Thank you very much, Chief. Anything you'd like to add?
Not a lot. I would just say that through the interview process, and I'd point out that we had a pretty good cross-section of fire department staff, council, and the mayor all sat at the selection process. And when we looked at all the candidates for this contract, we were impressed with all of them, but SEH really stood out as far as their, the fact that they were somewhat local, they have extensive experience in fire stations, especially fire stations of the scope of what we're looking at for our new station, and as well as the feeling that we would have a good working relationship with them. So we were all very excited about that selection, and I guess if any of you guys have questions for any of us, we're ready to handle those questions.
Alderman Buchlich?
Yep. The question is, that has approached me, was why do we need a Taj Mahal? Now, I've got some background from firefighters. Firefighters fifty years ago wasn't like it is now. There are numerous firefighters that have passed because of cancer, and all these fire stations now have to have special equipment, special rooms, they have to take showers. That's why the price tag on a fire station is a lot more now than it was thirty, forty years ago. It's not just a warehouse building to keep trucks and equipment in. It is also for the safety of the firefighters that are out there working their job. So I just want to make sure that the public understands the reason the price tag is a little high is because there is a lot more to just building a building for equipment. And besides, the fire department is open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They get meals there, they stay overnight. So there is a lot to this whole scenario. So I just wanted to make sure the public understood that this isn't going to be just a real simple, you know, put up building, put up roof, and we're all set to go.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions? Alderman Schmidt?
What is the uniqueness of this as far as the scope of it? Can you, I know John mentioned some things, but could you address that as well?
I'm not sure exactly where your question was, but with the other, Alder suggested there's been a lot changed in our industry over that course of time. He pointed out some really great things as far as cancer, cleanliness, where we used to co-mingle gear. We found out that in our gear, we're taking back a lot of toxins and carcinogens back to the fire station. So a lot of modern fire stations now are building that in to separate the facilities from, frankly, the dirty side to the clean side now with a contamination reduction zone in the middle, where we come in, we dump the dirty on one side, get it through wash procedures, whatnot, run our people through where we have even showers in that facility, in that area. So we get them in a dirty shower first before they come back into the clean side of the fire station. In my career, I remember literally bringing my SCBA mask back into the kitchen sink and scrubbing it off, and, you know, today, that type of situation, just simply wouldn't stand. So things have changed within the industry. Another thing that's changed within the industry is the size of our vehicles. You know, the station we're in now, the tolerances for the vehicles to get in and out are very small, and, you know, as vehicles have grown, we had to build larger stations to accommodate those. Another thing as far as the vehicles is, right now, we, all of our vehicles have to back in to our station, Station One, and one of the predominant causes of accidents in fire industry is backing accidents. So with the new station having drive-through bays, it eliminates a good portion of the backing type stuff. As far as within the city, our city has grown over time, and we went from a fire force that was a few paid personnel with a lot of paid-on-call volunteer personnel to where we are today, where we have no volunteer personnel and all full-time staff, which means we have to house people twenty-four seven. We have to have the bunkhouses, the locker room, shower, bathroom facilities for those folks. In addition, you know, the reality is when they built our station, mixed-gender fire stations weren't necessarily popular. Today, they're a reality. We have mixed genders. We need to have proper facilities for that. So a lot of things have changed, both within the industry and within our city, that has brought that to where we're at. The fortunate thing we have is this particular location stood out strong to not only be a spoke, or I'm sorry, a hub and the wheel of our city, and be a good centralized location for concentration of our resources, but it also stands as such for the area if we ever end up in a more regional situation. You know, it does also, by happenstance, serve as a pretty good hub for that as well. So we're really lucky, fortunate to have such a good location for this type of facility.
That's what I was looking for. Bless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Sparts?
I was lucky to serve on the committee at May's selection. Rest assured, we did do our due diligence on this project. There was a lot of long meetings. We went through piece by piece on each quote and looked at them and scored them the way they're supposed to be. And I think the city can be proud because we're going to, we're working towards a building that's going to last fifty, sixty, seventy years, similar to the situation we're in. We've just all grown it, having served in it. It's time for a change. The building needs work. We know that. I think we're better off relocating, updating it to today's standards, looking towards the future, which is how we're doing this. This isn't going to be a Taj Mahal. This is going to be a nice-looking building that's going to be functional, and that's what we need to look at and work for. And the only question I got is the cost basis. Could somebody go over how the cost was derived and what we're looking at for the contract, for the architectural services?
Yes. So there's a couple different ways to put the fees together, the professional services fees for projects like this. Some are based on a percentage of construction. Others, in the way that we did it, was we basically take this project and look at historical examples to figure out how many hours it takes to draw this, right? So you've got architects and engineers, you've got a team of, you know, a dozen people looking at the schedule between now and when you want to bid this in first part of June, and backcheck that against, calculate that against the hours, and then what the professional service rates are. That's how we arrived at it. Another way that we can backcheck that math is typically on a project of this size, like I said, we base it on square footage, but you could base it on cost also and take a percentage of the cost of the construction. It's a good backcheck, but we would rather be more thorough, and we, they're engineers. They have spreadsheets for everything, right? Plug all this stuff into a spreadsheet, and it kind of does the math for us, but it gives us a good understanding of how many hours have to go into that. Then we look at that against a current project. I mentioned Watertown is a perfect example, almost the same size station, very similar in terms of its site, and very similar in terms of it's delivered under a construction manager. So we look at all of that, and that's what drives our cost. And then we understand, too, that we have a little bit of an advantage from the standpoint that most of our professional services are being served from people that live in the area, so there's not a ton of, you know, travel time and overhead expense for that. So that allowed us to be a little bit more aggressive on our fee. I don't know where we landed in terms of fee, but we basically set it up based on a forty thousand square foot building and the hours that go into designing that work.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to...
So because the contract is still coming, the approval is going to be contingent upon final attorney review of the contract, so just to make sure that the motion incorporates
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract pending final legal review by our attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Buchlich. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at this point from any other members of the council? Otherwise, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good holiday, everyone.
Thank you, Usman. Item number three on our agenda is resolution to authorize acceptance and transfer of funds for Downtown Master Plan and Downtown Planter Project. Welcome, Jess.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be here tonight on behalf of this project. We've been working with a really generous group of private sector leaders in West Bend over the last number of years, and you may recall, back in May, they committed to supporting our Downtown Master Plan and Downtown Planter Project with four hundred thousand dollars toward those projects, and the city also committed to a hundred thousand dollars. This resolution tonight accepts their funds. It also accepts additional funds that they have recently committed, including a hundred percent of the cost of the purchase of the Mums downtown and the watering of those plants. They looked really beautiful in the fall, as well as splitting the cost of the winter greens that were also purchased and installed downtown, and thanks to Mike and his team for doing that work. It'll look really nice throughout the entire holiday season. So this resolution is to accept the funds that have come in so far, and also to allocate the expenses that the city has incurred throughout this project, and then to also automatically appropriate the funds that we continue to receive throughout the rest of this year that are designated specifically for the Downtown Master Plan and Downtown Planter Project.
Thank you very much, Jess. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Zinkshaim. Any questions for Jess? No questions? I will simply say thank you very much to this group of outstanding citizens of the city of West Bend and surrounding communities who continue to put a focus of their resources on the continued beautification of our downtown, which is tremendous to have that kind of support in what it is we have as our city center. So with that gratitude, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four is a resolution for Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Vibrant Spaces Grant Application within the Community Development Grant CDI Program. Please help us understand what that is, Jess.
That's a lot of words to essentially support our application to apply for the Vibrant Spaces. This is WEDC's program to continue to activate and improve public spaces. So we have applied for this. It's only been available twice, and we applied last year, and this year we are applying for lighting of our two white pedestrian bridges downtown, so they would be lit all year round. We are looking to have color-changing lights or just white. We would have the option to do both with them. They'd be lit on the exterior of the bridges for more of an aesthetic improvement, but also along the walkway as well. It's pretty dark there and kind of dangerous at night, and so this way they would be lit so people could see where they're going. Then also, in addition to the two pedestrian bridges, we would be lighting Vestpocket Park overhead with Festoon lights. So Vestpocket Park leads up from the Riverwalk to the Main Street. It interconnects those two public space areas. Right now, we have a couple of streetlights in there, and they're needing to be replaced anyway, and so this proposal makes the space a little more welcoming, brighter, safer, and also a space where events can be held, and we would look to really activate it with the Downtown West Bend Association and the bid, and everyone who would be, you know, partnering in something like that. In addition to the Festoon lighting, this is the same type of lighting that's in the public alleyway in between the Bend and Husar's House of Fine Diamonds. It would match that. There would also be more like pedestrian size or more of those Ballard lights that would shine on the pathway and wouldn't be so overwhelming like streetlights would be in a public park. So we are looking to apply for fifty thousand dollars. That's the maximum that you can apply for for this grant. It is, we will score higher on our grant because we also have an existing funding source to cover the remainder of the project within our TIDS and our Riverwalk project budgets.
Thank you very much, Jess. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sizer. Any questions for Jess? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Jess.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, Park Trust Park Impact Fees. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. This evening, our department is requesting approval to transfer two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from the Park Trust Park Impact Fee account to an expense account to be used for costs associated with the Aqua Park in Regner Park. This is one of those funding sources we had mentioned at a council, previous meetings when we were looking at bidding out the project and things like that. The current, currently, the current balance in the Impact Fee Fund is six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. The Park Trust Park Impact Fees Fund is specifically designed to be used for new park design development projects like this that impact the entire community. Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Allen. Any questions for Mike? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution to transfer funds from the Summer Lunch Program for Aqua Park in Regner Park.
Yes, sir. Again, this evening, our department is requesting the transfer of a total of thirty thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and ninety-nine cents from the Summer Picnic Lunch Accounts to a capital account for the development of the Aqua Park. This transfer would empty all of those accounts and put those accounts to zero. And again, it would be to support the Aqua Park and Regner Park.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlich and Alderman Allen. Any questions for Mike? Alderman Allen.
The Summer Picnic Lunch Program is basically not serving any purpose at this time, correct?
We have not operated that for several years. The numbers, participation numbers had dropped. Also, our staffing levels have also changed to support, you know, a program like this.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mike? Item seven on our agenda, the 2025 Free Schedule Amendments for the Department of Community Development and Building Inspection. Welcome, John and Todd.
Good evening. This evening, we just wanted to talk about our fee schedules for building inspection and community development. Our fees in community development haven't been increased since 2012 and building inspection in 2013. So I'm going to turn it over to Todd real quick. He'll go over a couple thoughts that he had, and then I'll finish up with a few of our fee schedules in the development end.
Good evening. Basically, building inspections, the way it was, was we're going back to what we used to be at. Essentially, back in 2013, we went down for fees because of recession, so we tried to ride that out as long as possible. But with the cost of everything going up, you know, gas, leased vehicles, inspection tools, continuing education, that sort of thing, we're asking to raise at least our minimum fee up to where it was, and then we've adjusted some other fees, really minor fees, and then added a few early starts for different things like plumbing, electrical, and, you know, fines for work without permits, that sort of thing. That wasn't on there, that should be on there, essentially. So... There's any questions from anybody?
Does anybody have any? I recognize that we typically do the questions after we take the motion, but does anybody have any questions for Todd at this point?
Some of these went up quite a bit, if you look at percentage-wise, like... Essentially, the minimum fee is the one that went up the most, but it's back where we used to be before we went down. It's not that we're, you know, picking a number just to skyrocket. And we are, every year, I do a permit study with 10 different municipalities, and we are well under all of them. They all range from, you know, $55 to $95 for a minimum permit fee for what they're charging, so...
So essentially, that fee was around 60 in 2013. It was decreased due to the economic constraints at that point. Most communities that lowered their fees, within a few years, they increased them. We've held our fees for almost 10 years at that lower amount. So we were actually at 60. We dropped it to 35, and we're just suggesting it's been 10 years. Probably should be brought back up to 60. What basically happens is if you were to keep it at 35, it just means it's the cost, those costs are just coming out of the general fund, and so that you're subsidizing that whoever's doing that permit. So it's just kind of bringing it back up, still keeping it lower than a lot of the other communities, but we just thought it was probably time to think about that moment in time in the past. And then, from the development perspective, we have two fee schedules that were in your packet. The first fee schedule addresses basically our land development fees. Most of them, we left as-is, but there was a few that we adjusted. So the minor, slight plan review, we were suggesting increasing to 400 from 300. The time for those is sometimes almost as much as those that go to planning commission from that perspective. And then we do technical reviews. Those were introduced a few years ago. They're a little less, but they're, they had been, they're a little less work, and so we thought it doesn't seem fair to charge them 400. It seemed more fair to charge the 250. Those are based, those numbers are basically based on the cost of staff time. So we estimated how much it takes us, the time that staff spends, based on staff, the appropriate staff's rate, and came up with a general round number for those. And then some of the other fees down below, some of them from 75 to 100, so they're sort of minor suggested increases. And then that fee schedule, which is sort of the last one in your packet, a lot of those are printing fees. So if somebody wanted to copy the zoning code, they could come in. That was actually not even at our cost, but it's also Valbe Online, so they could print at home. So a lot of these things, we rarely get anyone who actually comes in, but we thought it was appropriate to at least have those. If someone wanted a copy, they're paying the 25 cents a page from that perspective. But again, they could print at the library at home. They could just make it into a PDF and have it on their phone these days. So we rarely get those requests from that sheet, but we adjusted those to just kind of cover the 25 cent cost.
Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Buchlich. Any questions? Alderman Allen.
Where does this put us? Are we still at the bottom of?
For permit fees, Todd has a special, you want to?
For permit fees, we're right, we're like right in the middle right now.
Right in the middle?
We're right now. Yep.
So some fees other communities have, for instance, like a conditional use, the nominee falls as $1,000. We're in the hundreds. So there are some communities that are much higher, some that are slightly lower, but we tried to keep ours manageable, I guess, or, you know, sort of, we're not at the bottom, but we're slightly below the midpoint on some of those.
Alderman Burquist. John, do we see any kind of revenue generation with these fee increases? Are these strictly to offset the increased costs that we're incurring?
It's, I would say, I mean, I don't see, I don't see permits as an income source for the city. It's kind of covered, to cover cost of, you know, for a general amount of time that a typical permit takes from that perspective. So I think it's just kind of keeping up with, like Todd mentioned in the past, of, you know, different costs that the city incurs.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Number eight on our agenda this evening is resolution authorizing the sale and appropriation of funds of the Department of Surplus Equipment. Welcome, Doug.
Good evening. Public Works Department worked with our administration and our finance team to fund some replacement of some much-needed equipment in the Public Works Department. We tried to do this with two goals in mind. One is to keep that equipment operating or have equipment that's going to continue to operate, and the other to try to ease the burden on... Am I going to echo? Oh, okay. And the other is to ease the burden on the CIP. So we met our goals. We were able to do so by exploring different types of equipment, reducing the cost. We all know the cost of that equipment's skyrocketing. So we were able to utilize the funding from the sale of old equipment and existing CIP funds. So tonight, we're here with this resolution seeking approval to transfer those revenues, funds to cover the cost of that purchase, those purchases.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlich and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions for Doug? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Doug. Number nine, resolution accepting mutual aid reimbursement from the Milwaukee Police Department for the Republican National Convention Security Assistance. Welcome, Chief Daring.
How we doing now?
Oh, much better.
That sounds very good. Jason and one night. It's probably some cosmic message, I should say. July 14 through the 18th of 2024, our department responded to a mutual aid request from Milwaukee Police Department to provide officers for security for the Republican National Convention. I reported to this body. I'm once again proud to report there was a very successful deployment by our officers. Tenants Kohler and Becker, Sergeant Garcia, Officers Radus, White, and Welker played a crucial role in ensuring the safety of the perimeter surrounding the Republican National Convention. On December 6th, as we agreed upon, the West Bend Police Department received our reimbursement from Milwaukee PD in total of $34,315.70. That was placed in the PD Grants Account. I'm here to request that money be appropriately distributed. We've worked very closely with Kerry Winklebauer in Finance to make sure we've done it correctly in terms of going to the right accounts, making sure we're complying with all of the accounting procedures. Therefore, in the memo, it's outlined, but basically $12,000 is going into the overtime account, $15,000, rough numbers, in our salaries, $3,000 into the WRS fringe benefit, and about $1,800 into the FICA fringe benefit. Remaining close to $2,000 will stay in the PD Grants Account per our rules of accounting, which will be moved to the general account later this year.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Burquist and Alderman Allen. Any questions for Chief Daring? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Number 10, resolution accepting donations to the fire department. Welcome back, Chief Norin.
Thank you. Before you, I have a resolution requesting the acceptance of a donation for the fire department. We had a generous donation from a citizen, $150 from Georgia Robado. That donation was for the smoke NCO detector program, so that $150 will be allotted to that account.
Motion to approve with our thanks.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Allen. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Last on our agenda this evening, resolution amending rates for emergency medical services for the city of West Bend Fire Rescue, Chief.
Thank you. Also before you, for your consideration, is a resolution to amend the rates for EMS or ambulance billing for the West Bend Fire Department. I'll start off with a little background. When I came here, I reviewed the results of the McMahon Study of Fire Department Operations. One of their findings was that our ambulance rates were on the low side. At the time, it was kind of a rushed study because of my arrival in October and passed them, I think, in December. But we looked into it, and I looked at numbers we had available to us, and it did seem like they were low. So when I did a comparison that year and repeated this year, I tried to pick cities or departments that had operations that operated similar to us. Some of the earlier comparables, frankly, dealt largely with paid-on-call or volunteer staff, which is a consistent part of our overhead to provide that service, so I don't feel that they represented a true comparable for our service. So eliminated them. Attached to the resolution, you'll see a chart that has all the departments. I went from four other departments to, I think, eight or nine departments this year to try to get a good view across the board what ambulance rates were. And the graph you have before you, the proposed new rates, they represent a rate increase for residents of about 20%. And it maintains a 30% increase over that for non-resident patients. If you look at the graph, I've charted those proposed changes in there, and if you look across the averages, the new fees will put us just under average rates for residents and just over-average rates for non-residents when you consider our comparables. The exceptions there are interfacility resident or interfacility fees, which on both sides are considerably higher. That's intentional. Frankly, we prefer not to be involved in the interfacility transport business. Our goal is to maintain units availability in service in the city for 911 calls. If we get into the service of interfacilities, it brings up a lot of operational challenges for us, but the big one is, is it takes our units out of the city for extended periods of time. I think it'd be irresponsible to try to get into that business without a subsequent increase in staffing to support that. So we set them higher, but we do still leave them on the list primarily because there are a collection of time-sensitive emergencies one could have, say at St. Joe's, and they would need transport to an interventional cath lab or stroke center, and we don't want to have those patients sitting needlessly in our emergency room. So we still leave the door open to do that, but there is a premium involved. With that, I would note on the graph, just a couple of big notes. North Shore's rates, at this time, they bill separately from supplies from a base fee. The ambulance industry standard is pretty much to bundle that in and have your base fee include the supplies involved with the transport. North Shore, at this point in time, has not done that, so that, their rates include just the base fee only, but then they would add a charge for supplies. The chief of North Shore indicated that they're probably going to be making that change like we did last year to bundle those in, and when they do, their rate will probably go up from what's stated there. The other big one is Sheboygan. I note that the highlighted there, it's, there were 2024 rates. That's just the numbers I used last year. I don't recall what year those rates were set in, but they could be quite old. So with that, I guess I would just entertain any questions you might have.
Remind me again what BLS, ALS, ALS-2 stands for?
Great question. BLS is a basic transfer, requires no advanced life support interventions. ALS is what they call a paramedic-level transport, does require some sort of advanced life support. And there's two levels there. One would be for a more basic advanced life support transport. ALS-2 involves major emergencies that require numerous advanced interventions. Considered like a pulseless, non-breathing patient would be an ALS-2 charge.
Any other questions for Chief? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Alderman Buchlich and Alderman Allen. Any additional questions for Chief? Just a comment. Chief, thank you very much for putting this together with the level of detail you did in the research that went into it. And I think you characterized that, you know, for residents, we're still going to be below what we view as being average for non-residents, slightly above average, which I think is a good place to be at from a cost standpoint.
If you don't mind, I would like to touch on that. I failed to do that. There's a little bit of reasoning behind that, and it's the fact that the way ambulance, the ambulance business, the reality ambulance business in the United States is it's a money loser, and that our citizens, through their taxing, subsidize the level of readiness we have available 24/7 to respond. But given that it is, still does not cover all the cost with billing, we have to remember that not all ambulance users are consistent. One household, for instance, may never call the ambulance the entire time they live there, and the next-door house may call them three times a week. So I think because of that difference in usage, we have to maintain some liability for that cost of the service above what the taxpayer subsidizes.
Thank you. Alderman Sparts?
I was just going to ask, I may have missed it. When was the last time the rates were raised for EMS?
We did it last year. Again, it was a finding in the McMahon Study. They were considerably low, and being as I was kind of rushing with my preparation for last year, I didn't want to go too far too fast. So when we looked at it, we did 20% last year. Still kept us underneath those numbers, so again, we brought it to 20%, which brings us closer where we're comfortable with. I would anticipate that we do an annual review of this every year to monitor the current status. Frankly, EMS billing is kind of complex in itself, where 60% of our patients are Medicare or Medicaid patients. Those are subject to caps. Those caps are somewhat less than 50% of what our rates are. So we don't see these returns on Medicare/Medicaid patients, but on private pays or private insurance is what the impact.
Any other questions? Alderman Allen.
How do you, I notice we have rates for residents and non-residents. How do you... How do you, like, do you look at the guy that's the person that you're dealing with, and they're wearing a Hartford High School sweatshirt, so they're non-resident? They're wearing West Bend East, they get resident rates, or is it based on where you pick them up? In other words, if someone gets called to my house for an ambulance call, is that treated as a resident call because that's where it's happening? Or do you check the passport and find out they're from Hartford?
Well, we don't check the passport. As you might imagine, we're required to gather quite a bit of personal information to submit billing for EMS, and we base that based on where they live. So if you live outside of our response district, you'd be charged a, even if it happened right here, you'd be charged an on-res that rate if you lived in Milwaukee. I will point out, though, for clarification, that we have several communities that we contract with on for regular routine EMS response. And if we hold a contract with that community, we bill those residents at the resident rate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further questions, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as Chair.
All right, we will reconvene our common council meeting. We're on to our consent agenda, items five through 18. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingchime and Alderman Sternig. Burquist, sorry, Zingchime and Burquist. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to our items for consideration tonight, approval of the 2025 budgets for our TID districts. Jess.
All right, good evening again. Thank you. I will spare you tonight from going into a detailed TID-by-TID summary, but I'm happy to do so if you want. I know that you recently had that with our financial advisor, Phil Hassan from Ellers. So instead, I just wanted to present to you our TID budgets. We have 13 active TIDS. All of the budgets before you tonight are balanced budgets with varying sources of revenue, expenses, debt, and increment. Just to let you know, we do also have a really strong team stewarding these budgets throughout the year, including administration, community development, finance, Ellers, and we all play a role in these budgets. So I'm happy to walk through them if you'd like, or answer any general questions that you might have outside of what Phil recently presented to you in more detail.
Jess, you mentioned earlier talking about the grant using TID and Riverwalk funds as a source of revenue for that lighting project.
Yeah.
How does that work?
Sure, so you'll see in the varying budgets, there's different, Kerry is our color coder, so the green color coding areas, there are some that are for existing project funds, revenues, and there's also some areas for undesignated existing funds for existing project funds. So in a couple of TIDS that are in our downtown area, for example, we have existing funds that are undesignated for specific projects. So they're undesignated right now to specific expense, but they must also still be designated to a project that exists within the project plan, like the Riverwalk, and the improvements to, for example, the pedestrian bridges. So those are where the funding sources are going to be for that particular grant.
Thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none? There's a motion and a second. Correct?
No.
No, we didn't do that yet. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Alderwoman Sizer, Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
Our next item is an ordinance to rezone approximately 1.8 acres of land located at the southeast corner of Valley Avenue and West Washington Street, from B6 Office Park to B4 General Business and Warehousing. Before you start, I'll entertain a motion to put it on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen. Jim?
Thank you. So this is a request for the council to enact this ordinance to rezone the property. It's owned by the Rusterow Group. They're looking at taking it to the B4, which is their current zoning for the rest of their property. This is to help incorporate into an additional parking area for, or display area for their dealerships.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Alderman Sparts?
Did they check the sign-out?
Yeah, they did. In fact, we're working with them. We'll be scheduling a meeting to figure out options, whether either relocating it or redesigning the site in that area.
There was a, the Welcome to West Bend sign was removed from the original. So the planning commission approved it with that being rectified.
Any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jim. Our next item is a resolution amending the traffic manual for the city of West Bend. Chief Daring?
Good evening again. As you're aware, the Traffic Safety Commission is a citizen commission that you put together, Mayor, that makes sure that we have citizen oversight on government. It's a great example and experiment in democracy. Bill and I chaired a meeting on December 9th. We had a pretty full agenda. It was actually another great experiment in democracy. We had a packed, full room, people with a lot of passion. Anytime we talk about restricting on-street parking, it really brings the public interest and passion as well, so we're glad to see that. The resolution you see before you is the agenda items that move forward. The first two are very straightforward, is just the documentation to the traffic manual of the downtown loading zones and downtown barrier-free parking changes. Max did a great job, obviously Max did a great job, leading us through the downtown revitalization, reconstruction project. Yes, these first two items just document the changes to both downtown loading zones and barrier-free parking. Questions on those if you had? Pretty straightforward. Okay, the third one is a restrict street parking on Park Avenue, West 12th Avenue. Park and 12th already has restricted parking, but there was some sightline issues based on the hill coming over. Had a lot of police involvement in that area, working with the neighbors, working cooperatively with the neighbors to move some larger vehicles. Actually, at that meeting, this was kind of neat. We were looking to restrict all the parking. The public was very much against us restricting the parking, and we were able to come up with a compromise that addressed the sightline issues and only restricted one specific space, additional space of parking. And the homeowners in that area were very happy with that compromise, so that was kind of a neat thing to watch.
I agree.
Our final two, restricting parking on Riverbend Drive. This is working very closely with DPW. Again, Max and his consultant partners preparing a great report for us. Doug's team having a tremendous challenge keeping the roads clear, snow plowing, it's a small width. When you see cars parked on both sides, it was impossible to get a plow through. There was very little interest from the public, at least at the meeting or calling our office against restricting it, so that's, we're asking that you move forward and restrict that parking in the traffic manual. And finally, a long one coming, and we actually had Alderwoman Sizer had a constituent bring it up, but it's been on our radar for quite some time. If you're familiar with Main and Walnut, Main and Veterans as the south side of the downtown. It used to make a lot of sense to have Walnut be the through street and have the, or I'm sorry, it was just the inverse. Walnut was the through street, and it was a lot of confusion as Walnut and cars turning eastbound from Main onto Veterans, figuring out who was yielding to what. As that area's been developed, specifically the Roundabout, the opening up of the Gales Company, it becomes very obvious that Walnut is a through street, as Max has very accurately termed it, it's more of an on-ramp situation now, as Walnut comes through, the traffic on Walnut, and that traffic from South Main Street turning onto Veterans is yielding as an on-ramp. It makes perfect sense as you drive through there. It'd actually been the inverse. Our recommendation is that we change that and have those cars turning eastbound onto Veterans yield. That's been in front of the commission several times back in 2016, but because of a lack of any accidents or real nexus to change it, it was, did move forward. Now with that opening up, that construction makes a lot of sense. So those five issues, we're asking that you approve the resolution to move through the traffic manual.
Thank you, Chief. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingchime and Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
If I could just, there were other agenda items that were not moved forward, but I believe Alderman Schmidt is going to cover that in the Traffic Safety Commission, but Bill, I will come back to the podium and help you through that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last action item tonight is approval of our regular meeting, common council minutes from December 2nd, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingchime and Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to our reports tonight. A report of the Joint Review Board held on December 3rd, 2024. What number were we talking about? What TID? TID 17 we were talking about. It was an introduction of TID 17 to the Joint Review Board, which is, yeah, okay, good. I thought I remembered right. Which is the District 18th and NN, to the northeast of 18th and NN. That moved on to the Plan Commission. There was a public hearing at the Plan Commission, and then the Plan Commission voted to move that forward. That will then come here to the common council and then final approval to the Joint Review Board. So there's no action at the Joint Review Board. It was just an introduction of TID 17. Plan Commission report.
We had a public hearing for TID 17. We heard several residents talk about it and question it, and we just had a good discussion there. However, it was recommended to forward it to council with approval of the Plan Commission. We held a public hearing and approved the zoning change and certified survey map for 325 Valley Avenue. We approved the request for the demolition of the building there also. That was the rezoning that we just voted on, and that was done. And then we set a public hearing for land use and zoning changes for an eight-acre parcel at Northwest Corner of Spath and Main Street. I think that's for January is what we set it for. So it was a long meeting for little short topics.
Good. Dear Management Committee.
Okay, we had, I passed out the numbers for 2023, 2024. We had a slow winter, so this year, they took the, they took the survey and the numbers were really high. They were, the numbers were 209 to 230 deer throughout the various stages, and their recommendation will be to raise the number. Last year, we had a number of 80, and they only took 45. They actually stopped a month early due to the fact that the weather was very, very warm. So this year, doing, being the fact that the deer were very healthy, the weather was mild, that has increased the numbers drastically. And it is recommended by the DNR, the wildlife specialists, that we attempt to knock down some of the numbers, and it has been recommended to set it at 90. And the DNR and the USDA both agreed upon it. We just received 90 permits today. So we are all ready to go, and they did some really hard-drone surveys this year because the USDA wildlife had more time to get out there, and we got out there earlier than normal. So we are going to be donating the food back to the food pantry because they are very excited every time they get that. We usually end up with about a ton of venison meat every year, and they always look forward to it. So that's the report.
Very good, thank you. Traffic Safety Commission.
Okay, I'll invite the chief to come back up, but I just want to say, we, I want to thank the chief first of all for conducting a very, I think, amicable and very productive meeting. Had a full agenda, a lot of public involvement, it was pretty full room. I was kind of surprised at that, but the reason the meeting was longer is because we haven't met since February?
Yep.
This year. And as the chief had mentioned, this is democracy at work. I thought it was a good demonstration of that. I think we're working with a very good set of commissioners as well. And we welcome two new commission, commissioners, excuse me, Mike Kinsley, who's from Auto Safety Center, and myself, as my first involvement. And we also officially thanked Ken Pesh for his involvement for all these years. How long was he involved?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years? Wow. And one thing we also agreed upon is that we're going to have an established standing date. Chief's going to work on that with the commissioners to determine when that's going to be, how that's going to look, so.
Yep.
Other than the agenda items, you want to address the ones that didn't pass?
I know that there was some interest from some of the members on the panel here on some of our other topics. Some of them were pretty straightforward, people asking for yield signs or some parking restrictions in areas that just really didn't apply. We're guided by the reports that we get from engineering. I really rely very heavily on Max's expertise and looking at the uniform traffic codes, both the state and federal guidelines, to make sure that we're operating within what are established industry standards. So for instance, there was a request for Tamarack and Westridge. Westridge is actually not a street, it's a private drive, so the instruction of it doesn't really allow for additional parking. Really, the parking issue was more some neighbors having some issues. It seems to have resolved, and they're just looking for some markings, but that didn't move forward. There's some yield signs at some growing areas, Sumac and Lee, for instance, Reeds and Edgewater, that really have resolved by the continued growth in the area, when it was not a lot of homes in the area, then I think the speeds were a little higher. Now it's been controlled by the natural growth of the area. That didn't move forward. But as Alderman Schmidt was saying, each of these items we're taking very seriously, given the time, given ample time for public comment, we solicit, we notify every homeowner in that area before. If they can't make the meeting to talk, give their comments to us, I advocate for them on their behalf as well. It really is a really great example of being responsive to the community. The ones that did, I think, might jump out, Alderman Allen certainly, whereas Ninth Avenue and Tenth Avenue in the area of Holy Angels, so between, from Chestnut to Washington, but specifically Hickory to Poplar, very, very narrow streets, 19, under 20 feet narrow in width, and that has become a tremendous problem for Doug's team to plow, to pick up garbage, to do leaves. We were looking to restrict that parking year-round in that area. We had a tremendous response from the neighbors in that area, very much against restricting that parking at all. The commission voted five to one to not move forward with those restrictions. So we'll go back to the drawing board and figure out how we best address it. I don't think it's the last time we'll be hearing of that issue, trying to resolve some other things, but that's, the commission's oversight. And then I think everything was pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
Very good. Our City Administrator report. Chief?
Thanks, Mark. I'll just share a couple of things. I had reported to this body that the Walnut Street stormwater improvement would be done by Thanksgiving, and it wasn't. We, obviously, it's still under construction now. They're pouring some panels, they poured some today on Fifth, and they'll pour the rest of them, the balance of this week, and get that project buttoned up. There was a We Energies pipe that was discovered as part of of the project that held it up, and We Energies team got, after committing to our project, got pulled off into another project. So that's what caused the delay. Max and Mitch from our engineering team led that project really well and worked closely with Doug, because that's been an ongoing stormwater issue in that area. Long-term, it'll be great. It was a short-term inconvenience for our businesses in the downtown community for the last month and a half or so, but good news is it's moving forward. And then the three intersection project that's been ongoing throughout the summer, that had a completion date scheduled for December 8th. Lots of people have asked all of you about that, when are those intersections going to be done? They've asked me as well, when are those intersections going to be done? I've rhetorically said Christmas is when they're going to be done. I've said that since the beginning of those projects, and I learned today that that's close on a conference call. There's been a weekly update conference call with the DOT and our team of city staff that's often on that call. Again, we're hopeful that We Energies comes to the plate on this Friday and connects that switchover of power, and then they'll work Monday before Christmas, and then the 26th and 27th after Christmas. So the tentative completion date is December 27th, assuming all of those things happen and all of the equipment arrives as planned. And the individuals on that call today knew that that was very important to all of you and to the city of West Penn to get that project completed. So just know that your team is still on it, and the latest word that we heard is we're going to miss Christmas by a couple of days, but December 27th is when it should be completed and all of the lights on and working. And then lastly, I'd just thank the Communications Department. If you haven't bumped into the video, you guys are a part of it, and I'm proud of our departments coming together. It's good to show the human side of local government. We all work really hard and are bureaucratic in our daily lives, but it's nice to show a human side of what we do, and I think our team did that in a really, really great way. Our communications team put out a nice Merry Christmas video. So just Merry Christmas to everyone, and thanks for a great year.
Thank you. Any questions? Alderman Allen?
Yeah, Jay, you just need to change your messaging. You really meant Eastern Orthodox Christmas, right? That'll be done by Greek Orthodox Christmas.
Yeah. I apologize for that. I really thought it'd be done by Christmas.
Any other questions? We'll do our Alderman reports tonight, and I'll just, I'll call you out and see if you have anything. Alderman Zingshaim?
Nothing.
Alderman Schmidt?
I know.
Alderman Sparts?
Merry Christmas to everybody.
Well, I'll say Merry Christmas to them.
Oh, there we go. Alderwoman Sizer?
Merry Christmas.
Alderman Sternig?
I had 11 agenda items earlier.
Yeah, good job. Alderman Burke?
Ditto.
Alderman Allen?
I, I, this is our last official meeting of the council until after Fireman Kenny, Kenny Aslan, who's headed our fire protection detail for the city, retires on June, or January 3rd. I'd just like to personally thank him.
Alderman Butchlick?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. The only thing I have to report is I had the honor of presenting a proclamation last week at the Kettle Moraine YMCA Gala. They were celebrating 55 years of the West Penn branch and 25 years of the Fife family branch in Ozaki County that they operate. And so it was a nice celebration. If you're a Y member, go in and congratulate them on their anniversary. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, namely the TID 14 discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen. I'll call the roll. Alderman Burke?
Aye.
Alderman Sparts?
Aye.
Alderman Zingshaim?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sizer?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Sternig?
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
All right, we will adjourn into closed session. We're going to go upstairs, and we will adjourn this meeting after our closed session upstairs. So we will not reconvene here after our closed session. Thanks.